At the new Clinton High School. Approval of the minutes from November 22nd meeting.
I'll make a motion that the committee accept the minutes as presented from the meeting of November 22nd, 1990.
A motion's been made, do I hear a second?
There is a slight delay on the screen.
You want to second it?
Okay, I'll second that.
And under discussion?
Uh, page three, uh, school nurse selection process. Uh, Ms. McRae's name is spelled incorrectly.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Your name's spelled incorrectly.
Oh gee.
Oh my god.
Oh my god. So let's got right away.
Any other errors or omissions?
School nurse selection process.
Oh, McRae.
If there's no other changes or omissions or errors, take a vote now, accept the minutes. All those in favor? Unanimous. Approval of the bills?
Make a motion and we approve the bills as submitted.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the bills as presented. Any further discussion? Time will call for a vote, all those in favor? Public comments, questions, and requests, student representative? Public comments?
Yes, Ms. Hamilton? I was just wondering what the status is. I believe back in the spring, you moved in the committee pass that there were going to be signs erected to the entrance of Clinton on our success with first, and I realize we're getting ready for kickoff.
I questioned that myself yesterday when I got to the office. They are aware that we're still looking for them. The money has been encumbered and the money is waiting. We're just looking for wording for those signs before they're printed. We do have the stock and the pipes and everything else needed for them. Did your chairman have?
I will, I just need to know about it. Thank you, Ms. Hamilton.
Because we wanted to get all the dates on it, just not last year's.
Might have to wait a year and put on this year's too.
PTA comments? She was unable to be with us tonight, and she wanted me to let you know that tomorrow's PTA meeting has been postponed due to the town meeting, and she urges everybody to attend the town meeting, and so don't we.
Next item on the agenda is the presentation of a gift by Rock Festus. I'd just like to introduce this by commenting that we all know that in the community of Clinton, there's a unique feature to this community, and that is the support that is provided to the schools by the parents, by the members of the staff, and certainly by members of the community, and certainly the business community has come to the forefront of that. I recently had a conversation with Peter Steppen, the Director of Human Resources from Rock Festus, and he's here this evening to make a presentation to the Clinton School Committee from his company. So Peter, do you come forward, please?
On behalf of the company, I present the board here in the school district with a check for $5,000 for the new editing machine, I believe, which is where it's going to be spent, and hopefully we'll get that off and rolling, and that's just the beginning, I'm sure, of where we want to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
On behalf of the school committee, and certainly all the members I know join me, and thank you, we'd like to present you with a certificate as just a symbol of our appreciation, and we'll certainly have you back when the editing machine's up and running to show you what good work we're doing with that machine, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, sir. I could just comment that Rock Festus did this on their own initiative, they contacted us. A conversation that I had with Mr. Steppen, we discussed how best to use the money, we jointly decided that an editing machine would be a very appropriate use of the funding, it would get used throughout the system, pre-K to 12. Its primary purpose is to take many of the videos that we do and professionally edit them, so that they are professionally prepared, students can use it for their projects, teachers can use it for classroom projects, the school committee could use it for issues that they want to present, we might want to make presentations, it also allows you to swipe in and swipe out words, pictures. It's a very professional machine, and this would be a tremendous addition to our media technology program. The ultimate intention is that once we have the TV studio up and running here at the high school, it will become an integral part of that as well. But I've been assured by Ms. Strang, who will oversee this, that we will provide training for students, make sure that they have adequate knowledge of how to use it, as well as the staff as well. So I think you're going to see a lot of use from this machine, and I think it would be very, very beneficial to Clinton public schools, and it wouldn't have happened without the support of Rock Festus.
You know that every meeting, often because every meeting, you can remember the last time it was home people that presented us with all that aid, and now Rock Festus, because we have a meeting every week.
We'll certainly try. You don't need a motion to accept it.
I'll make the motion then, that we accept the gift.
Motion's been made, seconded, accept the gifts from Rock Festus. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all right, that's fine. Busy time of year, we all realize that. Student representative, Jen?
Hi. I have a couple things tonight, we had, let's see.
Move that mic to closer to you, please.
I just wanted to wish congratulations to CJS football team on the Super Bowl victory, and that was a while ago. We had winter sports that officially began, and we have basketball game going on right now, actually. We recently held our annual Christmas concert, everything went pretty well, despite technicalities, and we're going to present it to the school on Friday, the 17th. Trials for the all-school play performance are going to be tomorrow at the school dismissal. This year's play is called Anything Goes, it's like the church that I was so embarrassed. And this year's, we're going through, we're really busy time right now, filling out and sending applications. We have a few that have already been accepted, so I want to say congratulations to them. We have Nina Polack, who's one of Becker, Julie H, who's been accepted to University of New Hampshire, along with Natalie Bateman, Jocelyn Lawrence, also been accepted to Becker, and Brittany Stice, who's been accepted to Utah State and Northrop College in Illinois.
Congratulations.
Yeah, most of them have done early stuff, because I know Natalie good.
That's great.
Same here. Hope Santa's good to you.
Following along with the theme of student outstanding performance, I'd like to call forward Mrs. Buckley, Guidance Counselor, Clinton High School, who is going to explain to you a little bit of detail regarding the Hugh O'Brien Leadership Conference Award, and present our delegates for this year's program.
It really is my pleasure to be here tonight to honor two very special young ladies from Clinton High School for the Hugh O'Brien Leadership Award. Each year, different high schools in across the whole country are invited to nominate one high school sophomore for the Hugh O'Brien Leadership Award. It's mainly based on leadership quality, and in the past, they've asked the kids to write an essay telling, you know, the administrators at the school why they feel that they're a leader. This year was a little bit more difficult, because they didn't ask them to do that. As a matter of fact, they asked us not to ask them to write an essay. They wanted every single sophomore who would like to apply to be able to just fill in an application, have different members of the staff review the applications, and then make a judgment based on what the majority felt were the leaders of the sophomore class. And it was a hard task to do, because we do have a lot of leaders, and every single sophomore was given an application. We had about 20 sophomores return those applications, and what we did was we presented them to the advisors of the sophomore class. The advisors narrowed it down to the three people that they felt best represented leadership in the sophomore class, and from those three that were selected by the class advisors, we had nine voters in the high schools, different staff members, and overwhelmingly, they voted for two very special young ladies. Our actual nominee for Clinton High School is Angela Notaro. I'd like to put that to you right now, and should Angela not be able to attend the conference, which is all expense paid in the spring, we have Allison Coolidge. Two short years at Clinton High School, they've done an awful lot. Angela, for example, started out as class secretary last year, this year she is her class president, she's vice president of the student council. She plays three sports, I think it's one varsity?
Two.
Two of them are varsity. And she just became a peer mediator, which is a brand new program at this school. Allison is, has been on student council for two years, plays also three varsity sports, and I think she gives an awful lot to Wheel, is it Meals on Wheels, to the elderly. I think that in the season and in the time of our lives where so many kids want to know what they're going to get, we have two kids that we can be very, very proud of at Clinton High School. I know I'm thankful and I'm proud that we have two kids who like to give.
Send you the award. Angela, congratulations, and Allison, congratulations. I certainly wanted to join in congratulating the students, it's a wonderful program, one that I'm sure they'll benefit from immensely, and they'll certainly be excellent representatives for Clinton public schools. And I'd also like to thank Mrs. Buckley for her work in this area, it's one of the many additional tasks that she takes on, and does an admirable job, and we're very, very fortunate to have Mrs. Buckley as a member of our staff, so thank you, Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you very much.
As you know, once each month, we have been spotlighting one of the schools within our system. Tonight's turn is to Clinton Elementary School, and to introduce this presentation, I'd ask Mr. Burke to come forward.
I'd like to introduce Director of our reading program, Gail Prewendowski, and our re-recovery teachers, Kathy Devaney and Susan Lees. They're all, and so is Gail, re-recovery teacher. They're going to explain the reading recovery program we have here at the elementary school for our first graders.
This is our fifth year of reading recovery at the Clinton Elementary School. It involves one year of training through Leslie College, so each one of us had to go to class one night a week for a year to learn the program, and now we're in what's called continuing contact, where we go about eight times a year to keep up our skills. The funding for this program is through both Title I and local funds. Title I pays for two full-time reading recovery teachers, and local funding pays for Susan, which she does at half the day. We work strictly with first graders, it's a research-based early intervention program. We work with the most at-risk children in first grade. Over the course of a year, we probably work with 40 to 45 children. They come with us for 14 to 20 weeks, working one-on-one for 30 minutes each day, and we work with the two or three out of each first grade classroom, and each first grade classroom receives reading recovery services. These children are screened, they're recommended by the classroom teacher, then we screen them, we take them into the program, and they have to be tested out by a different reading recovery teacher before we release them, and we hopefully bring them up to an average level of reading. And Susan and Kathy taped brief parts of a reading recovery lesson, so you can sort of see what we do every single day, and I'll turn it over to Susan and Kathy.
Well, as Gail said...
Maybe someone could come up and get you on the camera. Gail gonna...
I got it.
But you're not gonna get out of it.
As Gail said, it's a 30-minute lesson, and that is broken up into three 10-minute parts. The first part is two familiar books that the child will read. One book that will be, a running record is done, which is an assessment of a book the child has read for the first time the day before. A 10-minute writing, oh, excuse me, there's letter work and word work in that first 10-minute session. There's a writing part for 10 minutes, and then a new book is introduced and read for the child, by the child for the first time. So what we've done is taped an abbreviated lesson, so that you can see the secrets of it.
And actually, our intent had been to bring children, because given the lateness of the hour and the season, we decided to tape it in sake of the children, so.
What you're seeing here now is called familiar reading. Let's read this one now.
Our dog Willie likes to wake me up in the morning.
That was excellent, sounded just like you were talking to me. Let's check this part one more time, Dave.
My dog Sam likes...
Is this Sam?
I mean, our dog Willie, my dog Willie...
Good fixing.
Likes to wake me up in the morning.
That Willie sure does. Great fixing, Dave.
My dog Willie likes to have breakfast.
He does?
Eat breakfast.
How did you know you had to fix that, Dave?
Because he, um, tells you Jews make me a mess.
That's breakfast time, isn't it? What's this letter right here at the beginning of this word, Dave? Eat. Could that say have breakfast? No, okay.
And we're always prompting to try to get the child to use reading strategies whenever he makes an error.
Likes to say, I mean, my dog Willie likes to say hello to our baby.
How did you know that that's what that said, Dave? Were you thinking about the whole story? Were you? Good plan.
Our dog Willie likes, my dog Willie likes to ride in the car.
Now look at him with his head out the window.
My dog's Willie likes to go shopping at the store.
Dave, the way you use your voice, it makes it sound like you're telling me a story.
My dog Willie likes to play ball.
Yeah, Willie's getting into trouble again.
My dog Willie likes to take...
Good fixing. How'd you know that said take, Dave?
Because take.
Oh, you look at the beginning, good plan.
And my dog Willie loves to make new friends.
Yes, he does. Look at Willie kissing that little baby, he loves to make new friends. You annoy dogs like Willie?
Yeah.
Who? Who you notice like Willie, who likes to...
Now we're getting to the running record. The child has read this book only once before, and we make notes on the reading strategies and the errors that he's making as he reads.
Run, the cat run on, I mean, over the baby, bad cat. The cat jumped over the table, bad cat. The cat saw a mouse.
By looking at the running record after the child has left, we can decide what kind of strategies we want to teach the next day, so that we're always working on helping the child and accelerating his progress as much as we can.
You try it.
This is the first grade game?
This is first grade. And these are the most at-risk first graders in reading.
Everyone?
Everyone.
How often do they come to you?
Every day for 30 minutes, for a maximum of 20 weeks. After 20 weeks, if they haven't made satisfactory progress, we turn them over to Title I. The program has a 20-week maximum.
And it's one-on-one?
One-on-one. Now we're on magnetic letters. This is supposed to be a two-to-three minute part of every program, teaching the child how to make and break and take words apart.
What's that say?
Not.
Not, you're correct. That's a word that you know, isn't it? All right, Dave, how about if you were reading, and you came to this word? How could you figure it out?
Oh, I know this word.
Well, how do you know? What is it?
Not hot.
It is hot. How do you know that says hot?
Because it starts with A in the O and the T.
We all know the T stays the same, don't they? And you know this word, don't you? So all you have to do is change the front part, you have a new word that you can figure out, because you know that word. All right, here, what if you were reading and this part was in the front?
And in the regular classroom, in our classroom, the child has to move, he has to get up, and we do this on a magnetic board.
You know this part.
So he gets to move around a little bit. But here, for taping, we did it right at the table.
Because I love that new word.
How'd you get that new word? What did you change? What do we have to change to get the new word here?
Um, not, so this would be hot. And this would be hot.
But how do you know that?
Because...
All you change is the front part. This word you know, you change the front part, you get a new word, yes?
Yes.
Yes, awesome. Want to try another one? Let's try one more, there's another little word I think you know. Here's some letters, you're going to have to make a word that you know. Kathy and I share a room, and Gail has a room upstairs, a lovely coatroom.
Converted coatrooms, yes.
All right, let's turn this A around, so it's going the right way. What's that say?
Learned a lot.
Yes, it does. All right, change the front part.
Assistant Mary Gerald's coatroom.
Fan.
How did you do that? How did you know?
Because this word.
How did you know it said fan?
Because it starts with F, the angle's F, turn it, and...
And what's this word that you already know?
Fan.
And what happens if you change your front part?
Fan.
Did we change this part?
No.
No. Change your front part again. What if you were writing a story and you wanted to write this word? What's that say, Dave? Remember, this is the word that you know, all we changed was the front part.
And, so this is, this should be...
There's an, right there, it's going to be...
Now we're on the writing. Every lesson has 10 minutes of writing in what we call a writing book or a journal.
Okay.
And the child has to generate a little sentence of their own, and then the teacher assists the child in spelling the words as correctly as they can be spelled at this level.
Well, if you think so, show me up here, be sure. Let's take a good look at it.
They are going to print first.
Print right.
Okay, that's not am. Dave, that says am. We want to work on that word, am, okay?
And for some of them, even holding the pencil is the problem when they first come to us.
Go ahead and push them with your finger.
Mmm.
Okay, push again. All right, what do you hear? What do you hear, that F? Push one more time, Dave.
Now Kathy's using a sound box to try to get the child to hear both sounds in the word am, because that's the word they're trying to spell.
Put it in. You've got it. All right, what's that word, Dave? Am, here, write it over here, so we can see what it looks like. Word H, next, eh? All right, what's that word say, Dave? Am. Here, I want to see if I can do this.
Now she's taking it to fluency. She's going to have him write it a few more times, so that hopefully tomorrow, he'll know that word and how to spell it the first time he sees it.
What's that say, Dave? Here, write it again, right here, am. What do you got there? Here, make it with this. What'd you make? What'd you make? Are you sure? Are you sure? Here, write it on this. Write that word on here, fast. What's that say, Dave? Yes, it does. All right, you know am now?
And we usually take a couple of words into boxes with every lesson. We try to pick the words that would fit, that the child can hear all the sounds and bring those to boxes. That will help him in the regular classroom also, when he's working in his journal with I'm having a sleepover.
When his mother knows.
Let's hope so.
Kathy, do you teach speed reading?
She's writing a long story.
But they know how to read upside down when they're finished with us. Now we're on the cut-up sentence. The next thing we do is take the sentence the child made, we write it on a strip, we cut it apart, and then the child has to reassemble it. He also uses that as his homework. He's supposed to take this home and do it with his mother or father two or three times each night for homework.
Right back together, just like we did when we wrote the stories.
And that reinforces word recognition and builds his fluency when he's reading, because he's reading something that's known to him.
I am having a sleepover over with Joe.
Are you ready? Check again.
I am having a sleepover.
And the last part of the lesson is what's called the new book, where we find a book that hopefully is something the child is going to enjoy reading, and he reads it for the first time with Kathy, and then tomorrow, this will become his running record. So tomorrow, we'll sort of test him to see how well he can read this book. And when we do a running record, we end up with a percentage, so he's reading it at 90%, which is instructional, or 80% means he needs a lot of help and we have to work on strategies more.
Find that word pelicans on this page. Was that...
We do a lot of teaching in the new book, introducing new words and new concepts. And we make sure we give a very good book introduction, so the alligator and things like that will be known to him before he even sees the word in the book.
No? Okay, alligator is, then. Now, these are birds, we have these birds, I'll put some rest in for...
The child brings a book home every day in a little bag that Susan provides with us from the library, like a library book, and his homework each day is to read one or two, however many books he brings home that day, plus do his cut-up sentence with his parents. So they do have homework from us every single day.
Catch.
You got it.
Um...
Sam, we're going to read this whole page again, Dave, fast and smooth.
I like fish, said the octopus.
Great.
And this is the way.
Could be caught, it's catch. All right.
Any questions?
Very good, no?
That's very good.
Thank you, ladies.
Excellent job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have a success rate that you can speak to? You talk about students being in the program for 20 weeks, most of them...
Well, research shows that 70 to 95% of the students that come into the program... Well, research shows that 70 to 95% of the students that come into the program will be at or very close to grade level. The grade level within their class, what's average in their class by the end of the program. And studies two or three years out have shown they seem to continue with that success.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Do you do one more? Going on? I have the report of the superintendent. I'd like to begin with a brief overview of the MCAS results. These were received last week. I reviewed them with the administrators. Teachers had a session on it last Thursday at their early release day. And they spent a great deal of time, both looking at the scores and more importantly, looking what the scores mean. We're taking a very strong stance that if all you do is look at the grade, so to speak, and don't look at the reasons behind the grade, we've accomplished nothing. So our task is, just as when you give a student a test and you spend a lot of time correcting the test, you don't want the student just to look at the mark and put the paper aside. We want them to have a learning experience for the child and also a learning experience for us. So we're spending a great deal of time at the present and in the future analyzing the results. What I'd like to do with you this evening, as I did with the, with the press, I invited the members of the different newspapers to come in and meet with me. And I've sent you this as well earlier so that you have a sense as to what it is. And I'd just like to quickly go over it. And Mr. Vetris and Mr. Gah and Mrs. Bonsey and Mrs. McGrail and Mr. Burke are all here in the event that you have any questions specific to their particular grade levels or anything that they can add. Just, there's really three different categories I'd like to speak to this evening. The first category that I wanted to demonstrate is what is the difference between the state scores and our school scores? And I just arbitrarily took a five-point difference as being very significant. And it is. I mean, you could go a lot less than, than five. But I chose to concentrate on the five because I think that's very dramatic. And I want to point out some of the areas where I feel it's really something that we, as a staff, as school committee members and as a community, should be very, very proud of, in particular in these areas. If you look at the grade four in terms of math, you'll see that 48% of the students in Clinton scored at the proficient or advanced category. There are in fact four categories. There's failing, there's needs improvement, there is proficient, and there is advanced. And they're often grouped in terms of the top two versus the bottom two. So proficient and advanced is very significant. So significant, in fact, that the research studies have done that when you give standardized tests, such as the Iowa test or the Metropolitan test or the California test, the 50th percentile is averaging needs improvement. So you can see the high stakes we're talking about. So these students that are in the proficient and advanced categories are students who are really excelling in the area of math. And in Clinton, our students at the fourth grade, 48% of them scored in those top two categories, whereas in the state it was 36%. So you can see we're 12 percentage points above the state. That's dramatic. And now we're analyzing what makes that happen. Likewise, we have fewer students failing, only, only 8%. And any student who fails is a concern of ours. But certainly, when you compare that 8% of the students in Clinton failed the fourth grade test, but 19% of the state failed, I think that's dramatic as well. And what we're already doing is looking at that 8%, what programs are they getting? What services are we providing? And what additional services are we going to be able to provide? And Mrs. Bonsey will speak a little bit later when she talks about the grants, because we're actually targeting that group. Also, if you look at the eighth grade, and I think this is very, very significant. At the eighth grade level, you can see that in English Language Arts, 69%, that's more than two out of every three students, scored in the proficient or advanced category. Our students are very fine readers and very fine writers. And that wouldn't have happened if the elementary people hadn't done their job as well as the middle school. It all builds up. This is not a test of the eighth grade, it's a test of our curriculum up to and including the eighth grade. So I'd like to say that's very dramatic, because you need to compare it with the, with the state average, which is 56%. That's a 14 percentage point difference. So we're doing wonderful things in the reading and language arts students category. Also, in that category as well, we're very concerned that 31% of our students failed. But bear in mind that 44% of the state failed. So that's again a 13% difference. In math as well, you can see that our math is, is again doing well in the eighth grade. 27% of our students failed, but 40% of the state failed. So that's dramatic as well. In the 10th grade in English Language Arts, 43% of our students scored at proficient and advanced. It's almost half of our, of our grade 10 class for proficient or advanced. 34% of the state. So that's a 9% difference. And then in failing, we had 26%, again a concern, but compared to 32% of the state. In science and technology, 32% proficient and advanced in Clinton, 24% at the state level. So you can see the differences that we scored versus the state. And because it's a, it's a test that's the same throughout the state, I think it makes sense to compare it to the state level and not surrounding communities, as used to be the case. The next area that I'd like to concentrate on, if I... Bear with me.
Mr. Philbin, could you move this thing back a little so we can get it on?
Well, I first have to get it right. Move it back where?
We can't get it on camera. It needs to be a little bigger.
A little bigger?
Back, 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 back. No, just the whole thing.
Pull what back?
The whole toy.
The whole toy.
Okay.
And then you'll just have to move the overhead up and down.
Okay, does that work for you?
Yep.
See, when you're left-handed, you have to bear with me.
Still not. It's not coming out.
Okay, and then I'll move it up when I get further along, all right? All right, now, again, I think it's important that we compare our state average versus the Clinton average, okay? And then you can see, as you go down here, English Language Arts, math, science, and technology, social studies, you can see in all of those categories, we are above the state mean score. The mean score for Clinton, for example, in English Language Arts in the fourth grade was 432. In the state, um, 232. In the state it was 231. So we're one point higher than the mean score. And the mean score is significant, because you may have many, many students scoring very high, but then you have some students scoring very low. And so the mean score is just the average. But again, you're doing it at the state level, you're doing it at the local level. So you can see in so many of those categories, three, five, seven, and eight out of the 10 categories, we were above the state average. One of these you may be reading in the newspapers, in terms of how they're analyzing this, they're indicating that a lot of communities actually went down this year. Actually, I don't have the number for you, but many communities went in the opposite direction. Which is possible, because you're talking different students. These are not the same cohort of students. The students who took it last year are different than the students who took it this year. But in, in our case, you can see that at the state level, we are above in every category but two. And that would be in math in grade 10 and science and technology. If you look at the other areas, very dramatically, English Language Arts, we're four percentage, we're four points above the mean average in grade 10, for example. And four is significant, when you consider the mean score. It takes a lot to change the mean score. The next area that I want to talk about is the comparison, which I alluded to just a minute ago. And that is how do we do this year versus last year? And that's another question that gets asked a great deal. And there again, you can see that we did not go down in any category. There were two categories remaining the same. And in every other category, we have improved our mean score over a year ago. Bearing in mind, we're talking different students. And bearing in mind that a large number of schools in the state did in fact go down, we did not. So showing that our curriculum is getting aligned, our teachers are working very hard, our students are working very hard, our parents are working very hard. And the results are in fact clearly demonstrated here. The fourth category that I just want to mention is an area we're also going to be looking at very, very carefully. And you can see that these are the four categories and these are the scaled scores. If you scored anywhere between 200 and 219 on the scale score, you're in the failing category. You, you need to know also that the grade 10 this year is not going to be held accountable for graduation, but this grade nine class, when they take it next year, will be. And any student who's in the failing category in math or English will not be able to earn a high school diploma. There'll be other opportunities for ta, for taking the test. But we need to target that group as ninth graders to make sure that we afford them the opportunity to pass this examination. And that's one of the areas that I'll be talking to you again about in the coming months, is what is our action plan to address these students in these categories? The needs improvement category is 220 to 239, proficient 240 to 259, and the advanced 260 to 280. But what I really want you to take note of, if you can see it, is on the bottom there is the number of students who failed so close. For example, eight points, 212 to 219, that's the upper end of failing. So, and we had in grade four, we had 13 of the students who failed in the English Language Arts, scored between 212 and 219. So you can see that with some work and some covering the gaps that the students exist, we're hoping to be able to bring those students up to a higher category. Same thing with needs improvement. Look at that, 66 students in the needs improvement category scored between 232 and 239. Now, I can't tell you how many questions that is, but I will tell you, there's not a huge number of questions. If they had scored a few more questions correctly, they would have been in the next category. So we've identified who those students are. We're going to look very carefully at the item analysis of their test results and figure out where the gaps lie and what we can do to support the effort to move them to a higher level. And the same thing for proficient, and you can look at core, boss again. Those are actually numbers of students, those are not percentages. Those are numbers of students. Now that's just English Language Arts. And again, I'm going to show you the same thing for mathematics. And that's where our focus is really going to be. Let's see what we can do to help those students boost their performance to a higher level. Again, I was just finished with this. By pointing out, this is the, the category in math, where you can see that in the math category, we talked about, again, the first column is grade four, then grade eight, and then grade 10. In grade four, 12 students failed, scoring somewhere between 212 and 219. You'll be looking at that. Math, you can see in eighth grade and then 10th grade. Same thing for needs improvement, and same thing for proficient. You go from proficient to advanced. 15 students in that fourth grade were that close to the highest category.
How many were advanced?
Uh, I'd have to look that, I'd have to look that up.
Because I know we had a number of students in the advanced category.
Right, I want to, I want to say there were like 15 or 16 students in the advanced category, to tell you the truth. In fact, maybe Mr. Vetris, while I continue, he can, if he has information, he can share that with you. I have it while, while they might be talking. I can actually tell you. But I believe it was 15 to 17 students were actually in the advanced category in the fourth grade. But if these students had just, were, had a little bit better skill, they'd have been up there as well. And then you can see the same thing in the science area as well. And again, I, I just need to reiterate that it isn't the scores themselves that matter to us. It's what the students do with the scores, what we do with the scores, that's really going to matter. With that, I'd like to invite Mr. Gah, Mr. Vetris, Mrs. Bonsey, Mrs. McGrail, or Mr. Burke to add anything that they'd like to add to this information. Or if you have any questions.
I'd be curious to see them next year, when you have the eighth grade repeating it again in the 10th grade. Just to compare those grades, see, you know, if they've improved or stayed the same or whatever.
That will be very interesting, if you're talking to the same students. I think that's a fair comparison. I think we need to look at growth. We need to look at the results of the eighth grade. And then what do they do from the eighth grade to the 10th grade to help establish the same cohort of students? That's apples and apples.
I'd just like to point out that chart that you had, there were students in the advanced categories in a number of areas that were mentioned in it.
Correct.
Those were all, I think, the kids who did fantastic.
Are there any other questions?
I have a concern. You know, this, a test is just a test. And, you know, I'm not too thrilled with the way it's set up. And I think, you know, with our governor having gone the idea of this being a necessary graduation and invoking funds from the budget is ridiculous. I'd like to see him take the test himself. But what I'm concerned about is, I mean, you know, yes, our scores are slightly better than Massachusetts' one. But if you look at the bulk of the students in Massachusetts, the bulk of the urban areas, where most of the students are, scored way below the average. So if you compare Clinton to Applewood towns, are we really above the average or not? And the second concern I have is, yes, our scores might be above the average, but we're still, you know, there's nothing where the average is means it over needs improvement. There's only one category, and that's eighth grade English. Everything else is needs improvement. In fact, in math, we're failing in 10th grade. I just...
And again...
What can we do to improve this? That's what I'm concerned about.
That's exactly what we're working on right now. We're not going to come to you tonight with, with what we're going to do. But we are analyzing exactly where the weaknesses are. We're looking at the curriculum. We're looking at how close the, our curriculum is aligned to the state framework. That's an area that we started on last summer. We're continuing to work on this fall. Now we see that these test results, again, bear in mind, we gave them last spring. Many of these frameworks haven't been in existence very long. That's one of the questions. I remember one of the reporters, when we did the press conference, asked me, did I consider it a fair test?
Yes.
And the validity study, you say it is a fair test. But I think the better question is, is it a fair test for the students who took it? When students are being tested on something that they were never potentially exposed to in the curriculum, then I think it's not fair for that body of students. So the 10th graders are exposed to a curriculum that's not just 10th grade math, it's math from K up to grade 10. All right, a curriculum that they didn't have from, from grade K.
And I understand, I think it's wrong, because I think, you know, with what's going on is that the state's pretty much mandating too much order, everything has to be taught, which I don't agree with. But, I mean, still, I mean, you know, seeing a 219, which is failing average score in math in 10th grade, is kind of disturbing. And you see no improvement over, I mean, there was, in fact, yeah, there was no improvement from last year to the next. I mean, that gets me a little nervous. I mean, as it is, I mean, say the, you know, we don't have the ninth grader score, the 10th grader score. We have a bunch of kids who don't graduate because of us at this point.
Mr. Philbin, can I?
Yes.
Um, many of the children that failed were students who are receiving special needs services.
Yeah, that's another concern. They're, they're given no...
They, they have to take the test regardless.
Exactly.
Um, however, they are allowed to have modifications. And in the presentations that were done on the half-day the other day, I asked my staff after that to take a look at the students who had failed. How close were they? What areas were they weak in? And we're really going to be looking much more carefully at the modifications that we are allowed to make for them. Part of it, so, many of the kids, we did small groups. Our small groups ended up being kind of large. So we're going to be looking at trying to bring in some extra people so that we can actually have a smaller group to keep them focused, to read the tests to them. Students who are in the resource rooms are generally reading well below grade level. So they may know the information, and that's another part of it. They may know the information very well and be able to tell it to you orally. But to get it on paper is a difficult task for a student with a learning disability. But that's in general across the state, and that's a concern of all special ed directors. When Mr. Philbin mentioned the needs improvement area is considered the 50th percentile on the California Achievement Test, the Iowa's. 50th percentile is dead on average. And I think what's happened is the state has forgotten the old bell curve. You know, half, the midpoint, and the middle is C, you know, average to above average. And then you have the kids on either end of the scale, the really bright kids, the kids with disabilities, and the lower level kids. And those are the kids that are having difficulty. And also, there, there are kids that just freak out when they have to take the test.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's understandable. I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with the bell curve thing, because I think, you know, you're kind of doing a service to students who just aren't, you know, proficient material if you grade them on a bell curve.
My way of thinking, a lot of it is, it's, it's looking for kids that are maybe going on to college.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, that's wonderful, and, and I think we need to do that. But we do need to look at the other end of the scale. And there's nothing wrong with them. My thing is, as long as they're trying and they're working hard at doing it, it's when they kind of blow it off. And, and that's why we need to do the smaller group. Because sometimes they'll look at the first question and they freeze and forget the rest of the questions. There may be easier ones along, you know, the testing is power testing, easier and harder testing, you know, questions mixed in. But sometimes the kids will get to a question, if they don't know it, they figure that's it. I don't know the rest of the test, and they freeze up.
Just to answer your question, just during 29 students in the fourth grade were in the advanced category.
All right, that's just one thing I'd like to point out. And, you know, I agree with Mike. I have a lot of questions about MCAS. Sometimes I think the test dictates the curriculum rather than the curriculum dictating the test. But it's here to stay, so we have to deal with it. And I just think that the people in Clinton need to realize that everyone takes this test. If they don't show up today at the test, it's a failure. Everyone takes the exam, whether they're special needs, whether they have language difficulties, or whatever. And I'm pretty proud of the fact that this school system throws everybody in that pot and comes out above average across the state. And the fact that we have kids in the system who, looking at the average and then looking at those charity schools in Bromfield, we have kids, a number of kids in this school system, who in case, their, their average scored by 15, 20 points. And a lot of kids did that. So I guess what I'm saying is, we're a public school system. With the demographics that we have, we run the gamut. And I think the teachers have done an excellent job preparing all the kids. There are certainly some kids who are going to be brighter than others, and some kids that are meant to go to other places in college and probably not as proficient in Macbeth as they should be. But I, I think that the system does a great job preparing them. And I don't think you can look at, and when you look across the state and you're looking at the average, you're looking at those charity schools and Bromfields and everything. Also, they're, they're all factored in with those urban schools that probably do look worse. So I think we are getting a fair view of what we, what we're doing. do look worse, so I think we are getting a fair view of what we, what we're doing. And all I can say is, I think we've competed pretty well, and I think we've run our way in the right direction.
How do you feel the stress level is among the students prior to this test, my days off the test?
Myself? I think the stress of the teachers and the students is, is terrible. The teachers are, you know, I think the curriculum frameworks are a phenomenal idea, so that if a kid moves from one town to another, they're pretty much working on the same thing, it's giving everyone a roadmap as to which way we're going. However, the stress that's put on for these tests, I feel is phenomenal. I've had teachers telling me about students, and this is, isn't even during test, ripping up paper, and I said, that's a sign of stress. You guys may need to get ready to hire like about 10 social workers and psychologists. I think we really need to be aware of that, Ginny, and that's a real good, good problem. And the teachers, I mean, God bless them, I, I don't know how they do it, the stresses that are on them, and they've got kids, you know, with limited ability, kids with average ability, kids that are movers and shakers. And I had a student who, who said to me, if I had to take the MCAS now, you know, to graduate, has already graduated, I wouldn't have graduated, and I said, no, because you would have had a heart attack before you even got to put pencil to paper. And there are a lot of kids like that, I think the stress level is phenomenal, and anything that can be done, I know the administrators are always trying to pat people on the back, and we need to support each other, because it's a fact of life, but everybody's got to kind of hold each other up, as well as hold the kids up, and the parents need to know that.
Well, any suggestions, you know, we're very open to them.
There is a session for parents, I know at Clinton Middle School, on the 20th, at six o'clock.
Yes.
At six o'clock, there's going to be a program within the middle school, for parents, students who took the test, to go over the test results, and provide exactly what you're asking, what you're asking us to do, is to give them some suggestions as how we can work together to make it better, and I know there's one at the high school planned as well. This coming Thursday evening at...
Seven.
Seven PM, for the same reason. For any stu, any parent of students in grade nine this year, or grade 11 this year, they all should have received the test results by now, they were all mailed last Wednesday. If any parent did not receive their test results, I really would appreciate if they would call us and let us know that, because they were mailed, first class mail, and we're hoping that everybody did receive it, and there will be these programs, one is coming Thursday at the high school for grades nine and 11, one for next Monday, a week, one Monday the 20th, at 6:00 PM for grade eight students, but I know Mr. Betris wanted to say something.
Just to add a little to what Kathy said, Ginny, the stress level of the teachers are, when I saw these results, and they came in the mail, and that was my staff, I told them to walk out of that building with their heads high. In no way am I going to have teachers work any harder than they work, you know, my effort's going to be on curriculum. Teachers can't work any harder, they can't be, be any more compassionate, or have a higher level of energy. I, teachers work as hard as any, as any, so we're, we're directing our efforts on curriculum, but our scores are very, very good, and we have a lot of any trouble for a second year, very, very happy looking.
Anything we do prior to these testing?
Well...
Rather than meeting with parents afterwards?
Mike, just, just so people will know, that, that Mike mentioned the level of difficulty, 78,000 fourth graders took this test last year in the Congress, 78,000, and the scores range from 200 to 280, 200 being lowest, Mike, and 280 being the highest. Out of the 78,000 fourth graders who took the reading language test, not one student got a 280, not one student got a 278, not one student got a 276. So that just shows you, yeah, kids do get perfect scores in S A Ts, when you have 78, 000 kids take the test, and those students get a perfect score, those students get close, but that just shows you the difficulty. Under 1%, it came back 0% advanced in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the fourth grade reading test, they've raised the bar significantly. It's incredibly stressful, and incredibly difficult test.
And I agree, I think it's a horrible way of doing things, I mean, I didn't have to pass a test to graduate from college, you know, and now they're making you pass a test to graduate from high school, and regardless of the fairness of it, I have no idea, you know, I just, I think it's a rotten, rotten thing, a rotten way of looking about things, and, you know, I think that speaks, you know, volumes on, on the current, kind of, kind of the Massachusetts government. But, you know, what can you do, it's here, and it's here to stay, and we have to, I mean, we've got to pump up the scores as much as we can, I don't want to see anyone staying back as they claim to MCAS.
No, once they pass it in 10th grade, they do not have to take it again, but if they don't pass, they have the 11th and 12th grade.
There will be other opportunities to take it, and we will provide opportunities for them to improve their skills.
And they only repeat the practice fifth. But we do appreciate all the work that has gone into this, by the staff, teachers, and the parents, and the students, and it's not easy, and we're, we're behind you 100% and we thank everybody for their help.
With that, I'd like to segue right into our next piece, which is grant writing. If you look at your report, also in your packet, you'll see that we have, this fall, since the creation of the position of Director of Curriculum Grant Management, some of 47,768 additional dollars has been brought into the system, I'm going to ask Mrs. Bonsey to make a brief report about that. I'd also like to comment that a lot of this has to do with academic work, after-school, vacation, summer work. The third grant, the $30,000 grant, is a very competitive grant, done in conjunction with community partnerships, because that's the, that's the vision, that's the focus the grant was given, so Mrs. Bovetsky and Mrs. Bonsey worked with a lot of people in the community, including Wheat and, and other groups, to put that grant together, and was successful in obtaining it, and it will be implemented right after the holidays. So if Mrs. Bonsey would come forward and just give you a brief presentation, then you can answer, ask her any questions you'd like pertaining to the grants.
My first report to you in September outlined that we were applying for some of these grants, and I'm happy to say we got all but one that we applied for so far, and we're still waiting to hear on another one. And before I get into that, there is future funding, the state has released for implementing or planning for full day K, we've been waiting to hear about that figure, and we're still not sure exactly what that is, but we'll be looking into that, that shortly. The individual tutoring and reading grant is earmarked, as you can see, to our fourth grade students who on last year's state mandated reading test scored in a certain category in the Iowa's, it was the Iowa exam was given in the winter, we had our results back before the end of the school year, so Mr. Betris had that information on hand, were able to identify those students early in September. Unfortunately, I can't provide one-on-one tutoring to all of those students, but we are going to identify approximately 11 of them, and the way, the reason why we say 11 is because it's, it's going to be run much like our summer tutoring program, the parent part of this is essential, because it's an out-of-school time program, so the parent needs to support that your child would be tutored on their time, not on the school's time. So I'm working with Mr. Betris in hiring a, or stifling a teacher, preferably one of his fourth grade teachers, to run this program, getting the tutors, setting it all up, and as that gets underway, I'll be able to report more on how that's going. It ends right prior to MCAS, as that MCAS exam, as it says, the curriculum model is just, it's like a coaching, like an SAT prep course, that's exactly what we wanted to do, is test-taking strategies, that kind of thing, and supporting that, those children. The POMS, Phase Two, POMS is an acronym for Partnership for the Advancement of Learning Math and Science, and we have identified math as a curriculum goal to look at at all levels, pre-K through, through graduation. And the POMS people, we have our regional representative in Shrewsbury through UMass, and she will be working closely with me in implementing some of the goals that you see outlined here in the POMS grant, looking at new math, exemplary math programs, bringing in speakers, having parent programs on how they can support their children in the learning process as far as math and science is concerned, looking at advanced placement classes, is that a way that Clinton wants to go, looking into those things, helping to raise those S A T scores, so this grant's going to do a lot, or I have a lot of goals for this grant, so I'm hoping, but that will get, I'm meeting someone next week as a matter of fact, that'll get underway as soon as January. The State Schools Program is a grant that is going to be mostly for the adult population here in Pitt, in terms of staff development, looking at issues for, say, school programs for gay and lesbian students, and to provide some in-service training in terms of tolerance and respect for all, and we have a in-service planned in March, from around that topic. You'll hear more about that as that is developed. The big money item in this grant summary is the after-school and out-of-school time programs, because that's hard to say, we just call it A F O S T, that's even harder to say, but the, as Mr. Philbin said, this is in a partnership with the, the C CAC, which we needed a council in order to even write this grant, we had to piggyback on a council. We already have one established here in Clinton, so it seemed like a logical segue to also hook into this. At this point in time, we have received the grant, and we have advertised for a stipend position to coordinate all the activities under the, under this grant, and just in brief, I can tell you some of the, what, the way this grant came to be, we emailed the staff on what kinds of things, in terms of enrichment programs, after-school programs, did you think we may have been lacking in Clinton, we identified what we had in place already in terms of sports, scouting, those kinds of activities, so we kind of want to earmark things that maybe we were lacking in, so some of the programs that, one of the proposals was a homework study skills club, so that's tied into our academic pieces. And as this develops, I'll be able to tell you exactly how that's going to work, which school was going to be in, we looked at having a homework hotline, kinds of things, maybe a cable show revolving around that, all sorts of things like that. Various art enrichment activities, we have staff that would like to provide individual music lessons, after-school, different instruments, theater workshops, there's one called Pizza with Mozart, it's a, it's a program in place already through the Therac Symphony Orchestra, and our children can benefit from those programs. Some of the physical types of activities that, there was the therapeutic horsemanship program that's at the Franklin Perkins School, and a lot of these came from our own staff, they knew about them, they told us about them, and we looked into it, and we're going to be able to provide these programs for some of our students. Creative movement classes, aerobic, aerobic programs, some looked into, and we have the martial arts programs, I'm, I'm just throwing these out, that they're potential, it's not, they're not definite, this is what the funding was supposed to, is supposed to be used for. And then there's enrichment clubs, meteorology, hiking, all, I can't believe how creative some of the people got on some of these, and I think that there's a need for it in Clinton, it's going to be run after-school, obviously, programs that could be during vacation times, weekends, extending this program into the summer enrichment program, we're tying, we're going to try to tie it all in.
Is this cost-free to all the students?
That, some of it, there may be some cost involved, it's not going to, it's not going to be minimal, if, if we can keep it, if the grant can fund it, we're, we're going to try to do that.
Stipend position, does this mean positions or position?
There would be a stipend program coordinator, and they would make all the contact, that, all the contacts that I mentioned, and then the person servicing, you know, providing the service would get, get stipend of the grant.
What would the higher end throw for that position?
We have a committee.
All right, that kindergarten one that you're looking into at this point, exactly independent on if we have space available to do other classes?
The way I understand, the, our, we haven't, I haven't seen the RFP, but what, the way I understand it, there's going to be money for people that have already started full day K once with Stan, and then there's going to be money for just research type of, I mean, looking at full day K, will it, will it be something that our town will be able to do, what does that look like, what will we mean, just kind of a research type of grant, rather than implementation, the planning money, just plan for it down road.
For years, I've been in favor of that full day kindergarten, all my children went to Mary's full day, and they benefit greatly by that.
Right now, we're limited by space, of course, but, but we definitely are looking in that direction.
Have you set a salary range for the program coordinator?
Yes, in the grant, there was a line item.
How much?
It's $4,500.
And I want to also indicate that part of the responsibility that person's going to be to organize a summer enrichment program, traditionally, an enormous amount of work undertaken by Mary Neely, at no cost, I mean, it's just been incredibly amount of effort she's put into that, and Mary is asked to be relieved of that, because God knows I'm keeping her pretty busy.
No.
No question.
And so this person, in addition to managing all of these multiple different facets, and having to be on-site after-school for all these activities, it's a bargain, because they have to organize all of this, make sure the registration is taken place, make sure the program runs smoothly, evaluating the program, and so it's money that can be very well-spent, and it's a bargain for us.
I also have a question about the POMS, is that the same POMS program that the CTA's involved? GTA in that act?
No, it's a partnership for advancement of learning math and science.
So I was wondering why it's just been POMS.
It comes from, it stems from the now on Science Foundation?
Now, we're going to have to find places, obviously, for all of these things once you start this.
I'm not sure, Jimmy, which one?
Well, any of these, for the after-school, lot of school thing, like St. John's Gym, Turner Hall.
Right, exactly.
Places like that, Perkins School.
We may be going, sending kids on, we, we planned for transportation in, in the grant, so that if we need to, and again, Mr. Philbin mentioned Wheat, they have their mini-band, we may be able to tie into that.
Sure. It's really a community-based effort, so we worked collaboratively with many, many of the students.
Anything was there you see in the pool, because their pool is open on here?
That could, that could be one of the activities, too.
It'd be nice to see how it went again.
We just have brainstorming sessions at this point, and I, I want to add that we got full fun, fully funded in this grant, we got exactly what we asked for, where many communities did not, a lot of effort on the part of the community partnership people, and, and Dan Young was part of the committee, and we really reached out to him.
$100,000 in grant, which is very good, very good.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Next item, I'd just like to give you a status report, giving you up to date on the use of the former high school. As you know, Mr. Dillon and I have met, we have gone through the building, he had certain, a list of things he wanted us to address, which we have done, he has approved what the work we have done, has authorized the use of the gymnasium, so the gymnasium, starting after the Christmas vacation, will be used for the elementary school gymnasium, gym classes, the physical education classes. I visited the site with Mrs. Rice, and we determined it would be appropriate, weather permitting, to bring the students across the street, under her supervision, and help hold their physical education classes in the gym, and so that will be on a daily basis, three days a week, that will be from 9:30 to 2:45, and two other days, it will be proportionate each day. Monday through Friday, from 3:00 to 6:00, it's being used by the JV and freshman basketball, boys' basketball teams for their practice, to alleviate some of the overcrowding that was exist, in existence with the girls and the boys program with diversity, JV and freshman locker rooms. The locker rooms have all been approved, Mr. Dillon visited, heat is on, well, it was my luck this afternoon, you never know, day to day, the heating system is really mandated, I'll tell you, but, yes, the heating system is working, the hot water is on in the rooms, we verified that, Mr. Dillon verified that, there is nothing here that is not done according to the book. Also, I'll get to the next piece, another potential piece which I'll discuss in my next item, is the use of it by Parks and Rec, but I'll get to that in just a second. But I'd also like to point out, working very closely with Mr. Dillon, he has authorized the use of the auditorium this coming Friday morning, the elementary school was not going to be able to conduct a Christmas show, there was just no place to conduct that show, Mr. Burke asked me, would it be possible to use the auditorium in the former high school? Again, I visited the site with Mr. Thomas Dillon, we looked over the site, he asked me to address certain areas, we do know that that building, the building that contains the auditorium, the gym, and the cafeteria, is structurally sound, that's not the building that we're concerned about in terms of safety issues, there are a lot of other issues, cosmetic issues that need to be addressed, but that building has been determined by the measure, engineering consultants, to be structurally sound, so there's no concern about the safety of that building, it's just making sure that the access to the remaining portion of the building do not exist, which we have addressed, and the building is ready for use, the auditorium will be used this Friday morning for an elementary school holiday show, so it's a one-time use, but we are going to use that. And so that's the use of the present former high school at the present time, okay? I would then like to couple that with a letter that you have in your packet from the Parks and Recreation Committee Commission, asking for the use of the gymnasium for Saturdays, for their Saturday recreation program, which has been in existence for many years, and it will be supervised by our own staff, it will be supervised by Mr. Gannon and Mr. Ritchie. And so I ask this evening for your endorsement of that request, to approve the request for Parks and Rec to use it on Saturday mornings, I believe it's from 8:30 to 4:00.
I'll make a motion, we approve the Parks and Rec use of the gymnasium.
So it's 8:15, not 8:30.
8:15.
I'll second that.
Motion is made, and seconded to...
Motion's been made and seconded to allow Park and Rec to use the old high school gymnasium from eight-fifteen to four P.M.
And also to waive, entirely that motion, and also to waive any fees for maintenance or cleaning.
Correct. And, and I, I'm willing to do that.
I'll call on that.
And that's only from January eighth to February twenty-seventh.
That's correct, that's correct. I think that should be in the motion also.
Right. From January eighth until February twenty-seventh.
Motion's been made and seconded to allow Park and Rec Recreation to use the old high school gym on Saturdays from eight-fifteen to four P.M., from January eighth to February twenty-seventh of two thousand, waive the maintenance fees for custodial services. Any other discussion on that?
Yes. Should we offer them a backup plan if the furnace should be broken? Or will they just not play basketball? Because in the past, they have gone in there and played basketball with it forty-two degrees, and I don't want to see people calling us because their kids playing in the cold gym. Will we offer them the middle school?
I will have to, I'm not sure that they're interested in that, I mean, I, I don't want to do that until I've had a conversation with both Mr. Gannon and Mr. Ritchie.
I think we should leave it open, so that last year, I guess, the planning, they couldn't get another place to play, and I don't want to see that happen to them again.
I think we can leave it open, though, because we didn't have a meeting to talk about it, we'll start.
No way to provide a, a backup place to play?
I, I think it's either the gym or they don't play.
Then I'd like to make that amended to the motion, that if the effect that the furnace is not up to par at that time, then they should cancel gym and not have some of the kids playing in there, although some kids will play no matter what, there were a lot of complaints last year that the place was too cold.
I would, I would imagine the building, if it's, if it's below a certain temperature, they're not going to allow them in.
Under sixty-eight degrees, they should be allowed to play.
If they're not playing in there, they're probably outside playing.
Sixty-eight?
Sixty-eight.
Wish that were the case in the old high school.
If it's a public building, you have to provide sixty-eight degree temperature. I just don't want to get into a habit that we get into in the last two years, with that furnace not running the way it should be.
I have a question about plowing, we haven't been plowing down there, because nobody's been down there.
We're doing test.
We have to plow to.
Right, I, I discussed that with Mr. Morgan already, we do need to continue to plow that park.
To the fire, so.
If one says, if you don't plow, every storm.
We don't have people coming in on Sat. What happens to me if I come and plow on a Saturday morning when nobody's working?
We'll be plowing the others.
You have to do anyway, that wouldn't be a problem.
So he just adds that to his list.
Okay. Do we need anything else about?
No, just a.
Is part of the discussion?
Well, if, if it's okay, fine, I just want to make sure that we don't run into problems that we ran into.
I wouldn't limit it to the sixty-eight degrees, though, I think that's.
No, whatever, whatever, whatever.
I'll discuss it with Mr. Gannon, who's really going to be the man who's supervising the program, and, and we'll, we'll establish them parameters.
Well, they got my kids, I don't pay alcohol for this.
We'll have a visit at the next meeting. But in all honesty, I could just comment on that, because I've had this discussion with Daria Jandon, and that's part of the problem, is that they do have parents who just drop the kids off at the door, they don't come in with them, they don't supervise them, they leave the kid there, they take off, and then what do you do with the kid?
And then they complain afterwards, because I had a mother come up to me at the Board of Health, saying her son caught pneumonia because the gym was forty-two degrees, so.
Maybe she should have checked to see.
Well, this is true, but.
It's not always our fault.
No, I know.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote at this time.
What was the motion?
This is excellent, you may.
Park and Recreation to use the gym from, on Saturdays from eight-fifteen to four P.M., from January eighth through the twenty-seventh, waiving the custodial services fees.
That's right.
February twenty-seventh.
Yep.
Second that.
It was been seconded, we were under discussion, now we're calling for a vote at this one for the discussion. Oh, David?
Moving on. The next item is really informational in nature, is to design a selection process, just to keep abreast of what's happening here, we have advertised, today was day one, in the central register, it was advertised today, requests for proposals, and it was also legal notice, I believe, in the daily item today as well. We have received nine phone calls today requesting copies of the request for proposals on day one, so there's a great deal of interest in the proposal for somebody to work with us in the design phase of a proposed new elementary school. And I want to emphasize, this is just the design phase, this is someone to go examine, to examine the site for geo-technical borings, for wetlands, for schematic drawings, just the preliminary issues that need to be addressed, if in fact, we do move forward on the proposal to build a new elementary school. But there's a great deal of interest in it, and those proposals will be, they do no later than eleven o'clock on December thirtieth, at which time they will be opened and evaluated, and then certain of the candidates will be interviewed for their qualifications to be selected by the Building Needs Committee. And you have a complete packet there as to what that proposal looks like, and it has been reviewed by Attorney Sergeant as well. Okay, now, interesting and curious, and that would be calendars, and I hope this is not the Philbin calendar, but this is the official American calendar. The first item is the project design, no, hold on, you go a little bit further, the first calendar is the calendar for the school budget. And that's a proposed calendar that I offer you for your consideration, subject to change, obviously, but this is the direction I would like to see us move into, unless you have some objection to this, I'd like to just pursue, pursue this option as to one we would follow to try to get the budget in place in time where draft could go to the county administrator and the finance committee in early March. A little beyond the request for proposal phase.
Keep on.
It says proposed calendar for development two thousand, two thousand and one school budget. I just wanted, unless there's some objection to it, I'll just proceed on that idea, but understand that it may need to date adaptation.
And this is complying with the finance committee's.
Exactly, I met with Mr. Ward and followed his preferred choices, and this is what, again, some of the dates are left open, because I'm not sure when the finance committee will be able to meet with us, and I didn't want to speak for them in setting up a date on their behalf without consulting with them for, let it sit for a busy couple of months. Okay? Is there any problem with that? Moving on then to the next.
Need a motion on that?
I, I don't think so, I think that's just informational, as you understand that it may have to change. The next calendar is calendar regarding the elementary school proposal, and again, this doesn't require a vote, it's more of informational purposes, as to what happens and what timeframe. The process really begins tomorrow morning at ten A.M., when we meet with the Building Needs Committee for the State of Massachusetts and Department of Education, Mrs. West, myself, the chairman of the Building Needs Committee, Mark Elworthy, and Donald Walter will be meeting in Lancaster tomorrow, with the State Building Assistance Bureau, with Mr. Backlin, and we'll be making a case to demonstrate our need for a new building. Assuming that is successful, and I certainly hope, pray that it will, you then see we have to move into gear to do the remaining pieces of this, so we would be going and ask the school committee to, and this evening, subject to the approval of tomorrow, I guess we better do this tonight, I would ask for a vote, that we go to the selectmen in early January to request a special town meeting to be held in late February for the purpose of the townspeople having their input on the, on a new elementary school. If that were successful, we would then, of course, have to have a debt exclusion override vote as well, but this is what the timeframe we have to work within in order to do it this year. The motion I would like is to.
Make a motion at the, at the board petition of selectmen for a special town meeting sometime in late January or late February.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to request a meeting with the selectmen for a special town meeting at the end of February.
It's January.
No, special town meeting.
Well, that's just, I don't want to say, I don't want to select them, want to set that meeting, but we'd like it to be in late February.
Any further discussion? I wonder if anybody realizes this is pending, our meeting with Mr. Backlin tomorrow. All's in favor? Tiamanas.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, it's when I gave you a calendar some months ago, it was through December, there are no meetings scheduled beyond tonight, in reality, because you cancelled the meeting for the twenty-eighth, so I've gone forward and prepared a potential proposed school committee meeting calendar for January through June.
Could you use a two thousand calendar?
We're about to find out.
The regular calendar, yours.
I hope so. You know, will I ever get this right? I, I did that deliberately to just.
I don't even have a two thousand with me, so I can't even tell you.
No, there are two dates that say ninety-nine, they're supposed to say two thousand. You see Tuesday, May twenty-third?
Yeah, May twenty-third, twenty-eight, nineteen, ninety-nine.
One of these times, I'm going to get it right.
And Tuesday, May twenty-third, ninety-nine.
Right, there's two dates that say ninety-nine, they should say two thousand.
April eleventh, that's a Tuesday, yep.
May twenty-third, Tuesday.
Tuesday, May ninth, is election day, right? It's the first Tuesday.
Who's up for election issue?
Jenny and Bernie.
I'm running again.
I just chose the second and fourth, after early, and we can change any dates you want, if you, you don't have to vote on this tonight, I mean, you can consider this and come back again.
That's just one that we should kind of.
I think we need to set the next meeting.
Yep.
Have a motion to approve the challenge and then change it.
So move, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, what did you?
Your calendar.
Because Michael just was raising an issue here, I just think I listened to this.
Well, now we're under discussion.
Fourth Tuesday of February's twenty-second.
Fourth Tuesday of February is the, is the twenty-second?
Yeah, I don't know if we want to meet before that, because we have, the budget, calendars go according to schedule, we have the special town meeting, the twenty-eighth, we're best able to meet before, meet before.
I think we, why don't we approve it now and change it at the same time?
Yeah, we can always change it in January, we find out if we've gotten that far.
Did you change those two dates from ninety-nine?
Because we'll probably have to meet a couple times extra for the budget, and that's probably will.
All right, a motion's on the floor to approve this calendar as presented, and if any changes need to be done, it'll be done at a later date, and it's the second and, any further discussion? All's in favor? Tiamanas.
Thank you. Next is the proposed school calendar, we're already looking at the two thousand, two thousand and one school year, to get to the compliance issues, and survive it. I've listed there five options, this is not something that you'll vote on this evening, but it is subject to review by many different groups, it's my understanding that you requested reviewed by the Clinton Teachers Association, the student council, the PTA. I'm at a loss here, do I miss somebody? School councils, I think should review it.
Yeah, school councils, yeah.
And, and we'll get their input and then come back to you, but I think I wanted you to endorse this before I send it on to them, so.
Did we miss anybody?
Anybody who wants can have some input on it.
The head of chair, I go along with the superintendent.
There are five different options.
The teachers might want to look at.
I didn't, I didn't, this wouldn't go to anybody until you've looked at it first, so I wanted you to see it tonight and authorize me to send it on to those groups.
Absolutely.
Unless you want to add any additional options or make any changes.
They don't get St. Patrick's Day?
I'm not going to touch that one.
You get St. Patrick's Day.
That's evacuation.
In Boston, yes.
Eddie, if you're in Boston, you get it off.
You know, what I've done there is, again, there are five options, option five, similar to one and two, except that it's two weeks of Christmas, one and two both start on the Monday, the last Monday in August, option three and four start on the Tuesday after Labor Day, the difference between one and two is whether they get Wednesday before Thanksgiving or not, and also whether they go until Friday before Christmas or Thursday before Christmas, that's the difference between one and two. The real difference lies in Thanksgiving and Christmas, to tell you the truth, the other issues are all pretty much the same, the issue is do, you go just Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week, or do you go Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday of Thanksgiving week, and then how, how long a short Christmas vacation is appropriate?
All right, so when it says the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, that's the Thursday and Friday on November?
Yes, correct. And the twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth would be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, whatever that was.
And let's see, the PTA is not meeting this month, so they're not even going to get this until next, how long are we going to have to decide, when do we need to decide on this?
I, I would like to think by February, in February.
You may want to put that somewhere when, when it's handed out.
Correct. We need you here by a certain date, and then we'll, I'll give you the result of the tally, and, you know, any input that you'd like to share, certainly listen to it at that point and make a decision after we've listened from all the interested parties. Okay, that's that. Moving right along here, staffing status. I have appointed a coordinator of bilingual education, her name is Kenny Contreras, she has been working in the city of Worcester, and she has really been doing some consultant work with us this fall on our dual-language acquisition program. She's very familiar, she's interested in that program in the city of Worcester and worked very closely with it, she has met with the elementary school staff, because she discussed this concept with the staff and, and with Fatima, there was an interview process, I brought a, I brought a group together to interview the candidates, there were two candidates that were interviewed, and two additional ones were chosen not to be interviewed, we started with four, and then two withdrew their candidacy, Juan Matos, who's the president of the Bilingual PAC, served on the panel, as did I, as did Mr. James Hastings, assistant principal of high school, as did Fatima Ferreira, the present coordinator of bilingual education, and it was the unanimous recommendation of that group that is controversially appointed, and I've done that.
What's your first name?
Kenny.
How do you spell that?
K-E-N-N-Y. And I'd be happy to, I will ensure she will come to a future.
Kenny, yes.
Formerly, Steve, but.
What's her last name?
Contreras.
How do you spell that?
Here, here.
Actually, last evening, last evening at the bilingual Christmas, holiday celebration, there was a lovely tribute to Mrs. Ferreira, who leaves us this coming Friday, and the Bilingual PAC asked that Miss Contreras be present, and they gave her a bouquet of flowers and welcomed her last evening, a very touching moment. We're all very excited about having Mrs. Contreras. Okay?
Good.
Sure they were. I would like, next like to discuss the, a recommendation for the school nurse. Again, this is a position that is available at the Clinton Elementary School, there was, there were six candidates interviewed, we did have a panel, we interviewed the six candidates, that panel included Mr. Sheridan and Mrs. McGrail, also a parent, Mrs. Troutner, a teacher, Mrs. Burke, the principal, Mr. Burke, the supervisor of school nurses, Mrs. Coyne, and myself, we interviewed the six candidates, I have checked the references, the, the committee that established the priority, I took the top candidate that the group decided upon, I did the research investigation of that candidate, that candidate actually spent time today at the Clinton Elementary School, as an opportunity for her to examine our program, as well as for us to assess her skills in the area of school nursing, and this evening I'd like to recommend to you the appointment of Carol Marie DiRienzo, DiRienzo, I'm sorry, DiRienzo, to be our school nurse.
I'll make a motion that the committee approves the recommendation of the superintendent to hire, to hire Carol Marie DiRienzo as the elementary school nurse.
I'll second that.
The motion's been made and seconded for the hiring of Carol Marie DiRienzo. Is there any further discussion?
Only that in interviewing her, she has experience, she's certified, and I think she's an excellent choice for her hire.
Any further discussion? This time I'll call for a vote, all's in favor? Tiamanas.
There is one other item of the staffing status that's not in your packet, and that is the transfer appointment for a CODA position, which is a certified occupational therapist assistant, and the position is going to be filled by Aaron Canole, who's a one-on-one agent, he's a certified CODA worker, and it should be taking the position of an individual who's chosen to leave and go into, stay in the field of occupational therapy, but not in a school setting.
Is this, is this a new position here?
It's a position that has been a consultant position, and because the person was leaving, we were able to renegotiate the salary and the, and the wage, the hourly wage, and we have a position, we have two people actually, the position was posted in-house, we have two people on staff who are certified occupational therapist assistants, we interviewed both candidates, and it was Mrs. McGrail's recommendation that Aaron Canole be appointed at that position , so that is how it's meant, it will actually allow us to increase the number of hours we're servicing students at a lower rate.
Okay, now, what is the position?
Certified.
COTA?
COTA, Certified Occupational Therapist Assistant. It's within the special education area.
Now, does this add another opening, or because there was a transcript?
It creates an opening in one-on-one aide. Aaron Canol was a one-on-one aide at the middle school. Now we have an opening there that will be advertised.
So it's a one-on-one as an occupational therapist, or?
Assistant.
You know, it's Aaron.
Aaron Canol.
Aaron Canol, he's already an employee of our system. She joined us this fall as a one-on-one aide at the middle school. She is a Certified Occupational Therapist Assistant.
Okay, so now her position is open?
That is correct. So we have a one-on-one aide.
So there's no newly created position, was it just?
No, 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 it's not a newly created position. It's to replace somebody who's leaving the system. No, I just thought, I told you before, I keep you informed of all staffing changes.
Thank you very much.
I just.
We still have two, now we have two positions open. One, we cannot, we've had open since July, and that's the inclusion teacher at the high school. We're not able to find someone to fill that position, and we still are hunting. And now we have, that position is still open, and we have the position of one-on-one aide at the Clinton Middle School. Not yet, because this hasn't taken.
The elementary and park, of course.
What did I say?
Middle, but that's okay.
Excuse me, it's been a long day.
Second one, whatever.
The elementary, I'm sorry. Okay? Next, subcommittee appointments. At the last meeting, I asked that you establish two subcommittees, because I felt these issues merited great depth in study and research. And tonight, I ask your approval for the creation of these two committees, it's on the next to the last page. The Home Instruction Policy Review, and I've listed the names there, and also the Rental Policy Review, and I've listed the names there. So I'd ask you to approve the appointment of that subcommittee this evening.
We have conferred on this, and the two policy subcommittee representatives, we put one on each, and then we put another board member with each of them on. This time I'll call for a motion.
So, hold on a second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the proposed policy subcommittees on home instruction policy review and rental policy review. Does everybody have a copy? Do you have those out there?
They should all have them.
I don't need to read them.
There'll be meeting on these.
Yep, the time to be determined.
After Christmas.
After Christmas.
Any further discussion? All of them in favor? unanimous.
We're not gonna close the superintendent's room this evening. I'm not done yet. Isn't that fortunate?
Alright, Chairperson report, F policies.
I think a motion that we accept all F policies is here.
Second that.
Motion's made and seconded to accept the Fs. And reviewed and updated for this meeting as the first reading. I had a question on FAE, and it's, they're finding out about it. It was a reference to 603 CMI 26.07, and they are looking into that.
Right, I believe the Department of Education regulation, not a legal, not the law, so I've asked the Department of Education to give, fax me what that really is, and I just don't receive it yet.
I can get that off my machine tomorrow.
Can you?
Well, I know it's been, it's been used in reference before, and I just can't remember in what contents.
I did call the NASC, who in fact prepared your policies, and they couldn't put their fingers on the citation. So they advised me to call the Department of Education. If you think it's hard to reach the Clinton Middle School, try and reach the Department of Education.
Try and reach any state department.
Alright, um, if there's no further, did we have a second on that?
Yeah.
If there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. It's unanimous. DD, policy second reading and adoption.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve it. Corrections have been made.
No corrections remain.
Yeah, it just said, yeah, it's taken out. The superintendent or designee will be responsible for seeking a-
That was already in there.
Yeah, but it was changed before, and we're changing it back.
No, there, no, it was, no.
No, never, never.
We tabled it.
Yes, but we had the two readings, and this was, this is, this is our policy right now.
Right.
So nothing's being changed. So we're just updating.
We'll just accept the policy.
Yes.
We had gotten two copies of this in our last pamphlet. One was the older one, where designee was not written in, but in the newer revision, designee was written in.
I'll second.
And there was a problem on which one was our policy at the time, so it is. We'll adopt this one here.
I'll second the motion that says, does superintendent designate?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Spal made the motion, and
I'll second it.
And Mr. Sheridan seconded. There's no further discussion. Call for a vote on updating DD. This is reading and adoption, right? Second reading and adoption. All of them in favor? unanimous. E policies for second reading and adoption.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second it.
Motion's been-
Other than the other two, EAG and EE ADEA, right?
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't had a first reading, most of these are all E policies.
I'll do it.
No, it says E policies, not all E policies. Why don't you say all E policies?
Well, it's any, I can-
Take all out.
Except for EAG.
All or nothing.
Alright, all E policies with the exception of EE AG and EE ADEA.
You got it.
EAEAs.
Yeah.
They oughta hire somebody to do this.
We did hire somebody to do it this way the first time, so maybe, you know, you don't even know what you're gonna get, but I can do it.
Are they still here?
Yeah, the school, it was the-
NASC?
Who?
NASC, we bought them.
We can get our money's worth.
I second the motion to adopt all E policies except for those two.
Okay. This time we'll call for a vote, all in favor? unanimous.
Most, the left hand.
Alright, now the board's feeling on EE AG, EE ADEA.
So I'm like, Madam Chair, we'll accept them in the first reading.
Which, what were they?
Liability, that we're waiting to hear from Dennis Sargent on the end.
Well, can we do them without, can we do them without the legal?
We're just approving the first reading.
I'm gonna, I think the motion to approve was the first reading, right?
Right.
No second then.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion, the first reading? All of them in favor? unanimous. Building Fields Committee update.
Okay, we had a building committee meeting, I think it was December 7th, 14th?
All coming together.
I think it was like December 2nd or something.
2nd. Susan's over there giving me a sign.
That's right. At that meeting, we had Jeff Yost there, who updated us on the progress and told us the, advised us of the timetables. What they're hoping to do is finish the roof, put the gables on, and have it, have the fieldhouse totally enclosed and winterize, so they can work on the inside. Hopefully by the end of this week and beginning of next week. The irrigation system for the fields up at the South Meadow end of the fields, the irrigation system has been tested. Everyone's seen it work, and it's been fully drained for the winter. We have had some problems with some individuals who seem to think it's a lot of fun to go out and drive around in vehicles. That's been a concern of ours. We were concerned that come winter, we're gonna have a lot of people who don't know any better out there in their snowmobiles and three-wheelers and everything on that piece of land.
Can you test it?
We, we were thinking of putting up a fence, and then we realized that, we were told by Mr. Yost that Travi Construction, who is a general contractor, is 100% liable for the safety and maintenance of that field until it's accepted by the Clinton School Department. Which means that if anyone goes and causes damage to that field during the winter, Travi is responsible for repairing it without any cost to the town of Clinton. Given that, we're allowing Travi to do whatever he thinks is necessary to save care of that field. It's his property until he hands it over to the town. So that is a concern. I know a lot of people have voiced their concern about what might happen without a fence all around the property. Rather than put a fence up now and have it too close to the road, or whatever, and plus, there's also a piece of property down this end that the town may need to take for the for the water filtration plant that they're gonna be putting in. They may be taking the corner of the field area down here. So before we put a fence up, we wanna know what we're gonna have to fence in. So that's another concern. The tower lines have all been moved. The fencing around the field, I believe, is complete, and they were completing the drainage systems around the field. Any else?
I was just gonna comment that the next meeting, which is next Tuesday at noon time, we're gonna be meeting with traffic engineer.
Right.
Coming in to discuss the traffic issues for easy access and safe access across the street from one side to the other, as well as meeting with the representative of the landscaping maintenance company to decide how we're going to maintain that facility.
And what type of, what type of lighting we're gonna need to warn people about if they're approaching the school areas and make it safer for people to pass. I also received a phone call from Brian Lynch. It's the international call, of course, this week, who has advised me that he will get their engineers over there together and give us a plan of what we should put in any proposal if we're going to be looking for someone to take care of those fields. IGC is willing to help us out tremendously, and I know they've donated equipment in the past to full the field. They gave them an aeration machine, the machine to cut the lawn and everything else down there.
And a golf cart.
And a golf cart. We have a golf cart up here. Only one key, I understand. Anyway, that's it. They're gonna be closing down work on the field from probably December 21st or so until the spring, they're looking into late March or mid-April. And we had the option of putting in a, putting in a parking lot prior to that. We decided that it's in the best interest of the town to wait until the spring so they can move the earth and pour driveway surface or hot top surface in the spring rather than the winter. So it doesn't buckle and crack and give the ground some time to settle, so. Basically, it's on, it's on track, and it should be done in early spring completely, so. I think a lot of credit needs to go to Phil Bailey, who's done a tremendous job.
Absolutely.
He's up there every morning at 7 o'clock, as I drop my kids off, he's headed across the street to talk to the engineers, and does a wonderful job for the town, so.
Are they gonna work on the field house? Are they gonna finish it?
They're gonna finish the field house this winter, for the most part. I feel like we can save pretty much that.
Thank you. Any, any questions? Okay, um, you got a list of the Building Needs Committee? On your last page?
Yep, yep.
And I need a motion.
I'd make a motion that the board, in retrospect, authorize the chairperson to officially appoint a Building Needs Committee for the purpose of studying the need for a new elementary school.
Motion's made, I'll hear a second.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded. The reason why we held off on this, we just had to find out through the biologists of the town whether it was our appointment or
Moderator's.
Moderator's appointment, and we could find out the building needs is the school committee chair's appointment, so. And they're doing a wonderful job together. We just had another meeting prior to this one, and it's moving right along. Hopefully, within the next week or two, there will be brochures coming out. And anybody who wants to host an informal meeting on the need of a new elementary school, please let us know. We will be doing that hopefully between January 2nd and February 28th. Holding open houses, showing on cable, standing on corners. Whatever needs to be done, promote this. Motion on the floor. At this time, no further discussion. I'll call for a vote. All of them in favor? It's unanimous. Any other one to add, or vote for me?
I would also make a motion that the committee authorize a sum of $9,786.62, which is money left over from the money allocated for the Clinton Elementary School. Take that money and, and transfer it to the article for the town meeting, which calls for the restoration of the plugging fire station, the old plugging fire station. Here, right, whatever.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to apply the remaining sum that was left over from the article for the elementary school roof that was not expended, and put it towards the fire station roof that is on the article for tomorrow's town meeting. Any further discussion? All of them in favor? unanimous. Also, Building Needs Committee's next meeting is January 3rd, 2000, at 7:00 PM, and there will be subcommittee meetings from that Building Needs Committee prior to that date.
What time is that meeting, Jen?
7:00 PM on January 3rd.
Who seconded that, Mr. Spal?
Yes, me.
Safety Committee update?
Nothing to report at this time, actually. The, what was commented on this evening is there was going to be a staff development. We had, you added an additional early release date for this school year, specifically for the purpose of addressing safety issues with the staff and make sure that they're aware of the proposal that we have in place to assure the safety of our students. And that early release date is gonna be held on Thursday, January 6th.
Okay, um, town meeting is tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. I'm jumping ahead myself a little. CTA?
Nothing very discussed, wishes for a happy and healthy holiday, same to all the students and staff.
Thank you.
Alright, um, third grade concert will be here, see a little bit of that tonight?
And we'll close the show with it, yes.
Okay, and tomorrow afternoon at 1:00 PM, there's gonna be a concert given by the kindergarten class up at the Corbin House for the residents up there. On 12/21, at noon time, that's the next field building committee, field's meeting on traffic and maintenance. Strategic Planning Committee met again last night. There was 21 people that showed up with Dr. Conroy, and they worked well together. They're still devoting a lot of their time, and they are breaking down into subcommittees at this point. So you'll be hearing them for the date, the future date for a five-year plan. Okay, and any other business?
Just a couple of things. I'd like to, I'd like to comment on the fine job that Mrs. Worth and Mrs. O'Malley did for the sixth grade Christmas show that we went to. And also, Carol O'Malley had a did a fine job at the third grade Christmas show, which I guess we're about to see. Mr. Williams. The, here we also have a memo from Mr. Gibbons, our athletic director. Reminds us that on Monday, December 20th, the athletic department will honor the 1974, 1975 Clark Tournament champion cheerleaders from CHS at halftime of the Clinton Show of Boys Basketball Game, which is home here at Clinton. The game begins at 7:00 PM, public reception, a talk of the town after the game. Following CHS student athletes were selected for Midland while choosively. Following, C H S student athletes were selected for Midland Wachusett League All-Star teams. In field hockey, Liz Wagner and Angela Nataro. In girls' soccer, Liz Torini and Julie Nataro. Volleyball, Brittany Stice. Golf, Will Estrada. Boys' soccer, Mario Ramirez. In football, we had Matt Santiago, Matt Shaughnessy, Matt Hole, Jay Papekki, and Alex Mercado, who were mid-watch All-Stars, selected to the Telegram and Gazette Super Team, where Matt Santiago and Matt Shaughnessy, and selected to the Telegram and Gazette Division C All-Star Team, where Matt Hole, Jay Papekki, and Alex Mercado. So congratulations to all of them, and.
And on the Super Bowl.
They've given us a gray year with the Super Bowl and all the other sports. Now, there's also a spaghetti bridge contest up here recently for U.S. First. Those kids should be recognized, and I understand Mary Neely's record is still intact, but she lost the crown this year on the spaghetti bridge, so. Again, congratulations to those kids who were participating.
We'll make a new crown out of some wet noodles, how's that?
Oh, yes, by the way, I'm glad you brought that up. Mr. Cohen just asked about a winter schedule and also a roster of the teams, which we did for the fall sports, and we'll be doing that for the winter sports.
I'm sure Mr. Gibbons will work on that.
He's working on it as we speak.
Exactly.
Well, there's no other business? Just like to wish everybody a happy holiday season, and see you next year on January 11th.
Just as the meeting closes, if you don't mind, Madam Chairman, I'd like, I'd like to echo Mr. Sheridan's remarks about the outstanding work that's been done by our music program, our choral program, our instrumental music program. Today, we had an opportunity to observe the third grade, do a wonderful show at Clinton Middle School. I'd like to close this evening with their finale, so I really think it represents the best of what Clinton has to offer. The whole show geared upon sensitivity towards multicultural issues and how different people of the world celebrate this holiday season, and how that's a wonderful activity, and we all should be proud of the diversity that exists within the world, and especially within this community. So, allowing, I'd like you to close with this portion of it.
Why don't we take adjournment first?
Correct.
At this time, will you make a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Questions made, seconded. Happy holidays to everybody, see you June 11th.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.